I just printed it out on colored paper because I can never find it, you know, and once things get... Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 20th meeting of the Morro Bay Planning Commission. Let the record reflect that all members are present, and the meeting is called to order. And we will begin, as we usually do, with a moment of silence, please. Okay, thank you, and if you'll now stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. This is a time that's set aside for announcements from the Planning Commission. Are there any commissioners who have items they'd like to bring up this evening? Richard?
Yeah, I, um, there's a Halloween alternative at Shoreline Calvary Chapel, right there at the old elementary school, and it's a way that families can just bring their kids. They have a maze there, and it's just a one location where they can just have a safe environment, and the Shoreline's been doing this for years, and it has a lot of good, just a good community outreach, and just inviting everybody of all people.
Thanks. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, moving on, then, we'll move to public comment period. This is a time set aside for you, members of the public, to come forward and speak to us on any items that are not on the agenda this evening. We'd give us, just give us your name, and we'd love to hear from you.
Good evening. My name's Marla Jo Bruton-Sadowski, and I'm making a announcement for the public in general, as well as your part of the public in here. It's come to our attention that there is a planned acoustic survey test to be done in the area adjacent to the Rock. You can't really see on there, but the Rock and the parking lot, the ocean side, not on the harbor side. And so that dark line there is the survey area, and it goes up to the high and low tide lines on the beach, the box. Anyway, I'm the chairperson of Coast Alliance, and its Coast Alliance has a strong opinion that the 21-day pre-survey notice was not given public notice to the community in a meaningful way. According to the Calvary State Lands Commission, OGPP is the Ocean Geophysical Permit Program. The section on public notification says, "Because low-energy geophysical surveys result in the presence of survey vessels and associated equipment that may interrupt or affect other ocean users in the survey area, it is important to ensure interested and affected parties are aware that a survey will be taking place." And then they follow it up with, "In addition to other requirements of the permission, the permittee," which in this case is Few Groh, "are required to provide a 21-day notice of survey activities via email or regular mail to the U.S. Coast Guard Local Notice to Mariners, as well as to harbor masters and dive shops located in near the survey area. This ensures that local entities and individuals who may not be aware of the OGPP are alerted of upcoming geophysical activities in their area." These tests were set to begin yesterday, Monday, the 19th. I didn't find out about it until the 13th. I went to the city council meeting. It appeared that the city council weren't aware of the tests either at that time. I just, I would, at this point, I'm not prepared to talk, speak about the technical part of this test and the equipment, because of the, I don't have the short notice I have. Right now, I'm just trying to reach the public and let them know that there could be some survey boats or a vessel, and then they would be towing a 13-foot aluminum powerboat behind the big vessel. Anyway, Coast Alliance is engaged right now in trying to get some sort of injunction just at, at the state-level agencies to pull the permit for the October 19 through 23 survey period time, to allow a proper notification to the public, a 20-day pre-survey notification. And basically, the harbor department is supposed to post the 21-day free pre-survey notification on the public notice board in the harbor office, and that was not done, according to various individuals that have gone in there to check since we found out about it on the 13th. The Coast Guard is supposed to have it posted likewise. It's kind of hard to get in there. You have to get keyed through because it's Homeland Security. But on the 14th, a Morro Bay citizen went into the office, and the personnel there didn't know anything about the survey that was to begin yesterday, Monday, and they didn't, did not have a posting, public posting. So we'll just start with that. In our opinion, the dive, I called the surf shops, one in Morro Bay and one in Cayucus, on Friday, and they had not heard anything about it, and I asked them if they had any posting or anything for people, and they said no. And just to finish up, this is way Morro Bay, I'm so proud of Morro Bay citizens. A young mother, young woman, took it upon herself today to, she wrote up a little petition, basically, "Did you know?", and she went down to the, at her lunchtime, spent her lunchtime at the Rock parking lot and on the beach there, and, you know, asked people if they'd heard about this, and if they hadn't, asked them if they would sign her petition. And so she, she got 38 signatures on her lunch break in the area that the testing is supposed, supposedly already set to be happening, but it's not, and we're hoping that it's not until people can be notified. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Teft and Commissioners, Kathy Novak. Is this the appropriate time to address the Commission on Consent Calendar, Item A1, or would you prefer that I wait?
I think this would be a good time, Kathy.
Okay. I was not able to submit this letter in advance, so what I would like to do this evening for the record is go ahead and read this letter to you, and then once I finish the letter, then I'll submit this hard copy to staff. Address to the Commissioners. On behalf of Mr. and Mrs. John Huff, I would like to respectfully object to the findings presented in the Planning Commission Resolution Number PC 40-15. At your October 6, 2015 hearing, I presented a modified project that incorporated your previous comments, as well as describing specific issues for a redesign that would have exceeded the city's height requirement, altered the architectural integrity of the proposed design, added additional and unnecessary grading, and affected the Huff's future use of the house for medical purposes. In addition, I offered that the Huff's had worked hard to design a home that not only met the city's standards but surpasses those standards for lot coverage setbacks and is consistent with the LCP and general plan. The findings for denial on the coastal development permit and conditional use permit, however, state that this project is inconsistent with the general plan, local coastal plan, and zoning ordinance because it is not visually compatible with very, excuse me, compatible with the character of the surrounding neighborhood in terms of bulk, size, and scale. In zoning ordinance number 17.48.190, there are five criteria for the protection of visual resources and compatible design. Specifically, the proposed project is not inconsistent with this policy because of the following. One, it does not impair significant public views. Two, the project has minimized the alteration to the natural landforms by citing the project on the flat portion of the lot. Three, it is consistent with the most recent development approved in construction within the immediate vicinity. Four, it enhances visual quality with a new construction. And five, is not located within a highly scenic area depicted in the LCP that requires additional standards. As for LU 15, that policy is a broad and general statement for the city that has no specific implementation measures that provides guidance to the applicant for city standards other than what was contained in, within the zoning ordinance. Last, coastal land use policy number 12.02 does not apply in this instance because it is clear that this project is outside the boundaries set forth in this policy. In closing, this project, as proposed, will not be detrimental to health, safety, morals, comfort, and general welfare of the persons residing or working in the neighborhood because the design is virtually compatible, visually, excuse me, visually compatible with the surrounding uses that have similar bulk, scale, and character. The project will not be injurious to, or detrimental to property and improvements in the neighborhood, but rather will enhance the area with new construction of a single-family home that is comparable to the surrounding area as it relates to bulk, size, and scale. The project will not be injurious or detrimental to the general welfare of the city because the project is a single-family home within an existing R1 zone that is surrounded by a low-density residential development and otherwise does not create any significant impacts. Thank you for your consideration. Signed by me.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the Commission and proceed on to the consent calendar, which consists of Resolution Numbers 40-15, approval of the minutes from the Planning Commission of September 1st and September 15th, and the current and advanced planning processing list. Would anyone like to pull any of those items for further discussion?
I'd just like to make a note on the Motion B1, page 2, on the minutes. It has, it states that I made the motion, and then I seconded the motion, and I'm not sure if I'm allowed to do that, so.
So, let's see.
So it's page 2 on, on the minutes for September 1st.
Does anyone recall who actually made the motion?
I think I made the motion, but I don't think I seconded it.
We'll be able to look, I'll look back at my notes. I record every, every motion in a second.
Okay. I would like to pull Item A1 for a separate vote because I have a conflict of interest, and I'm going to abstain from the vote on that particular item. So could we have a separate vote on Item A1, and then we can look at A2 and A3? Is there any discussion on that? So, all those in favor of A1?
I think we're voting on A1 now. Do you want a voice vote?
I think, I think, I don't think we need a roll call. I think a voice vote will be fine. Or actually, I guess we need a motion. Do we have a motion to approve A1?
Motion to approve A1.
Second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion, now we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Right.
And one abstention. Okay, then, moving on to A2 and A3, any discussion in either one of those items? Do we have a motion to approve A2 and A3?
Motion to approve A2, A3, with exception of the correction, I guess.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. So then we will move ahead to Section B, our public hearings, and the first public hearing tonight is B1, which is case number UP 0-429 concerning a property at 976 Ridgeway here in Morro Bay, and I believe that Joan is going to talk to us about this.
Thank you, Commissioner Teft. Good evening, Commissioners. The first item before you this evening is a request for conditional use permit approval at 976 Ridgeway Street to allow, in addition to an existing single-family residence with a non-conforming rear yard setback. The property is located within the R1 single-family residential zone outside of the Coastal Commission Appeals jurisdiction to the north and the west of the state park and to the east of Kern Avenue. The current requirements of the Morro Bay Municipal Code for rear yard setbacks render the existing structure non-conforming. When it was built in 1992, a 10-foot rear yard setback was required. However, the project was approved and built with a 6-foot setback, and no variance was granted for this nonconformity. In 2011, a one-time addition to a non-conforming structure was permitted and constructed, therefore requiring conditional use permit approval for any subsequent additions, which is why we are here this evening, and the proposed addition is in conformance with all requirements set forth in the Morro Bay Municipal Code. This is the existing site, as seen from Ridgeway Street in the image on the left, and as seen from Tulare Avenue in the image on the right. This is the existing site plan. The proposed second-floor addition will be located above the two-car garage, which sits on the western portion of the lot, seen here on the left of your screen. The applicants propose to add a 735-square-foot second-story addition and 126 square feet of exterior decking to an existing 1,692-square-foot residence. The lower floor plan shows the addition of an elevator to provide access to the proposed habitable square footage on the second floor, seen there in the center of the image. The second-floor plan details the proposed art and recreation room, the elevator, an additional bathroom, and the relocated laundry room. These images show the east elevations. The existing is to the top-left, and the proposed is shown on the bottom-right. The existing and proposed south elevations. These, the existing and proposed north elevations, as seen from Ridgeway. And these are the colors and materials for the proposed project, which match the existing facade of the residence. It is staff's recommendation that the Planning Commission approve the requested conditional use permit, number UP 0429, for the proposed addition to a non-conforming structure by adopting Planning Commission Resolution 41-15, subject to the findings and conditions of approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Let me start out by asking if anyone has any ex parte communication to report on this? So then, are there any questions of staff on this project?
Joan, one thing I noticed is the drawings explicitly say no changes to existing landscaping. You're not aware of any attempt to take down any of the existing trees on that corner?
I am, I am not aware of any of that, no harm.
Joan, the reason that it's coming before this group is because it had a one-time exemption?
Yes, ma'am.
And this would be a second?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
And Joan, I kind of, either I missed it or I didn't get it, but in terms of the color scheme?
Yes, sir.
Could you just go into that a little bit more?
I believe the existing siding is a light green. The roof materials will stay the same. Underneath all of the eaves is a nice wood. You can see some variation in the color there. The agent had submitted a couple other photographs that show, show the, show the same thing. This was the one that showed up the best in my presentation. You could see it clearly. But it is, I believe, a blue on the, on the stucco and, and wood, that green, light green wood on this, on the siding.
So if there are no more questions from staff, I'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. Normally, we give the applicant the opportunity to speak first, or applicant's representative, so if you'd like, please come forward, and we'd love to hear from you.
Good evening. I'm Charles Kleeman. I am the designer on the project. Just wanted to thank staff for their timely processing of the project and let you know that we're here to answer any questions you might have. I did design and build the original home, so I know quite a bit about the history of all of this, and I hope you'll inquire if there's anything more you want to know.
Very good. We'll save our questions till the end of public comment.
Thank you.
Please stick around.
Hi, I'm Marla Jo Bruton-Sadowski, and I'd just like to let the homeowners know that I really appreciate the beautiful landscaping job that they did, and it's awesome. When they first planted it, I was going, "Ah!", but as everything's flourished, it's just beautiful, so I trust their taste.
Anyone else? No? So seeing none, we'll close the public comment period and bring this back to, well, unless there are questions for the applicant or the applicant representative, yeah, Jerry, I'm sorry, we won't close it.
Okay. Could, could the designer step up, please? It's rare we have somebody that has been through the whole process of, on a construction design, especially on a non-conforming structure. So what happened with the 6-foot setback on the addition?
Okay. In the '91 or so, I believe, I designed the project, and there was a, there was an existing home on the site that we raised, a typical beach shack at the time. And I am not sure what happened. I cannot find the plans anywhere except in my own records, and I have a received, a stamp set received from the city that approved the project with the rear yard setback at, being defined at 5 feet. So we came well off of that to 6 feet, is how we got there when we built it. But whether or not that was non-conforming from day one seems to be a little bit of an, there seems to be some disagreement on that. I'm not sure it's really going to get solved. We're proposing to make all of the addition be within the guidelines that are existing today, and I think we actually worked with those to make the, the design better fit the design guidelines for massing. There's not, there's no walls that line up with each other or create, you know, large, just big, big two-story walls. There's, there's none of those anywhere.
Have you done a topo on this, and have you just taken the corners?
There's, the, 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 be the eastern boundaries are surveyed, and they're surveyed for, never the property upstream, so it's very easy to derive, and we've checked all that with string lines and off of the, off of the two survey marks that exist on the property.
Okay, but the corners haven't been recorded, then?
Yes, there is a registered survey, I believe, the, I don't have it in front of me, but the, it's denoted on the plans.
Okay, so your, your four corners have been staked and marked and recorded?
Well, they've been, they've been recorded by derivation, by the surrounding parcels.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for, I'm going to ask you the same question I asked Joan about the color palette, because she's talking about light green, and I, to me, it looks like it's a kind of a dark green, the current, the existing color.
It's more of a sea, sea blue, I guess you would say. It's more of a washed, not quite turquoise, but it's got a hint of green, but it's predominantly a...
Sea foam.
Yeah, yeah. The picture is actually pretty accurate, color-wise.
And the, and the addition will be the same color, or?
Well, the addition will be proposing no new material palette, so it's just pulling off of exactly what's there. There's some, some grayish plaster on one side of the house, and this siding on the rest of it. A lot of it is derived from being able to use that same siding again, and we think we've, you know, played around with it quite a bit so that we've got percentages of materials that make sense. It's not predominantly, you know, it's not just split right in half type thing. It's, it's trying to look right, I guess, as you say it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. So we will close public comment, bring it back to the Commission for discussion. Do we have any volunteers to lead off?
Okay. I'd just like to impose a condition to require the corners to be red, to be surveyed and monument set and recorded, just because we have an issue with a, with a nonconformity that, you know, I'd just like to make sure that that's, that it's, that the corners are clearly marked when building starts.
Commissioner Luer, if you look on page one of your, of Exhibit B, which is the plan set, the corners where that, where that setback is in, is in question, those two corners of that property line have been marked, have been surveyed.
Yeah, we, we just don't have the other, the other corners marked. It'd be pretty simple for a surveyor to come out and set the corners, so.
I think the point is, the area where the nonconformity is, we do have those set, and we do have those established through a record of survey, so.
Okay.
Setting the other ones aren't going to better define that nonconforming setback, I guess.
Okay. I'll, does anybody else have concerns about this, or should we just let it go?
If staff is satisfied with the...
I mean, we'll, and we'll even pull the survey. I mean, it's, we, we have access to all the surveys that were done in, in the city, so we'll make sure when we do the, the review of the, the building permit application that we, that we pull it and look at it, and if the applicant is doing it correctly.
Kathy, we're on your side?
I have no problem with the project and no questions.
Mr. Luer? Mr. Luer kind of addressed the issue with the applicant as far as the nonconformity in that, that was the only kind of issue I had. Other than that, I'm okay with the project.
I think it's fine. I think the upper portions are conforming. The existing part that's lower is the nonconforming, so I think I'm comfortable with when we have something nonconforming that's been there. At least the residents, local residents, would assume anything new would be conforming, so we're doing that. I just, I just kind of chuckle when I look at the house because the, it seems like some of our, our additions are much better than our new houses. I mean, it's, it's, it's striking how this is, this is a really fun house. I don't know the insides of it, but I, I Google Earthed it, I walked around, I... I don't know the insides of it, but I, I Google Earthed it, I walked around, I looked the site through that, I drove past it a couple times. It's, it's a beautiful sight. You know, the only thing I wanted to make sure is, I would hate to see the landscaping go. And part of the charm is that landscape that's there, and, and that's why I asked about the existing trees. So I would, I would hope there would be an understanding that the house and the landscape are acting as one thing there, in a really beautiful kind of way. And, you know, I, I want to see it when it's done, and this is one we got to use for some of the, a good example of some of the, the things we're looking at in the design standards. This has a fascinating set of materials, it's got massing that's amazing, it's got a landscape. The only thing I was thinking of with the setback is maybe at one point they considered that the side yard and allowed it. Because of the street orientation, you know, and, and maybe that wasn't recorded. So that's the only thing I could think of is why it wouldn't be such a big thing, because the dominant face is the side, is the Ridgeway side.
Yeah.
Ridgeway side. So, so I'm fine with it. I think it's a great job. I will say one thing.
I think you're, I, there's no way to know, Michael, but I think you're probably right. We've run into this before, where the address is on one street, but the, technically, the front yard is on the other street, and it, there's been confusion on that in the past, and I wouldn't be surprised if this somehow got caught up in that. I think, number, number one, I, if you've been involved with this all the way along, I want to compliment you, because I think, I think the, I think the previous addition just is seamlessly integrated and it just goes together very nicely. I will, I will, I would just like to say that, you know, that this is getting to be a pretty good-sized house. It's getting to be a fairly large house, you know, but in my, in my opinion, and that's all I've got, it fits pretty well into this neighborhood. There are neighborhoods where it wouldn't fit, but, but in this location, I think it, I think it fits in just fine. And so, you know, I, I think that's, that's why we have design guidelines, that's why we consider scale Balkan mass, and I think sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't work. I think this, in this case, it works, and so I'm prepared to support the project. So if there's no further discussion, do we have a motion?
Don't all jump at once, you guys. Move to approved resolution number PC 41-15, approving a conditional use permit, UPO-429 to allow an addition of a non-conforming residential structure at 976 Ridgeway.
Second. So we have, we have a motion, and a second. Do we have any discussion on the motion? If not, could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Sadowski?
Aye.
Commissioner Lur?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Aye.
And Chairman Teft?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you very much. So we will, and good luck with your project. So we will move on to public hearing B2, which is case number CP 0-365.
There may be something disclosed here you might want to have in the file, just to document what potentially that was.
Okay, we'll try again. Case number B2 is CP 0-365 involving a site at 3093 Beachcomber here in Morro Bay, and Cindy has the honors on this one.
Good evening, Chairperson Teft and members of the Planning Commission. This is for 3093 Beachcomber. It's a coastal development permit request and adoption of a mitigated negative declaration. The staff recommendation is changed from what you see in your staff report, and prior to the meeting, I put at your desks there a revised site plan that staff received this morning. Since the staff report was published, it came to staff's attention that the ash buffers, environmentally sensitive habitat, were not drawn or shown correctly on the site plan. I've prepared a couple of slides just to kind of walk you through some of the new information that we have. And then at the conclusion, staff will recommend that the project be continued to a later hearing date to allow the applicant to revise the plans, at which time, staff would bring it back with a full presentation. This is showing you sheet T1. This is your, of your plans, and at the top is the topographic survey. I've outlined in dark black here the property corner boundaries. And then, just to make it easy to read on the screen, I'm showing you in red, this is the ash line that's also shown on your plans. This is what was released in the staff report, and it shows the 50-foot setback line. The property is adjacent to environmentally sensitive habitat, and per the LCP, the sand dunes that were identified west of the property require a 50-foot setback, which is outlined in the staff report. Accordingly, the original plans that were submitted for approval showed the house was designed to be outside of the 50-foot setback line. So outlined in green, you can see the footprint of the proposed home. After the staff report was released, it came to our attention that if you were to measure 50 feet from the ash line, it does not meet the 50-foot buffer, and the blue line, this is the revised site plan that I put at your desk before the meeting started, this shows what the accurate line should be, and so if you follow that to the bottom of the page, you can see that the house does indeed encroach into the 50-foot buffer setback. So anything to the left of this blue line should not be house, and there are portions of the master bedroom and the dining room, and then this is an exterior deck that encroaches. So because it was a duly notice public hearing, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission open the public hearing, allow for comment. The applicant and their agent are here and would like to make comments. Staff would just leave it at that. The recommendation is that the project be continued to allow applicant to revise and resubmit plans that accurately reflect the 50-foot ash buffer setback. And of course, I'm available to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Thank you, Cindy. So again, I will ask if anyone has ex parte communications to report? Well, I will report that I was out looking at the site, and I did have a conversation with the next-door neighbor regarding primarily General Gab, and, and he did report a little bit about ocean run-up and what, what happens in that area during storm conditions. However, nothing was divulged, which is not on the record and will affect my decision this evening. So with that, are there any questions for staff?
Cindy, explain how this happened at the late, at late notice about the difference in where the 50-foot line was. How did that come up?
Unfortunately, it was a, the buffer setback was drawn as a parallel line. The lines should actually be drawn so that at any point, you would be 50 feet away. And as you can see, these light black lines, you should be able to draw them so that they were, like I said, they can go in any direction. Originally, though, it was just drawn as horizontal lines, but the requirement is that 50 feet from any point.
And it was brought to our attention by Chair Teft.
Thank you.
Other questions? I just, one kind of technical question, Cindy, the, the letter from the Coastal Commission, Exhibit B, asks specifically about the question of sea level rise, and, and just looking at the area of the staff report that, that talks about this, it talks about a 100-year storm event, but it, it doesn't specifically mention sea level rises, and I didn't have a chance to access the original report. Is sea level rise dealt with in that wave run-up report that was submitted?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? No. So, so we, we will then open the public comment period. This is a public hearing. We will traditionally give the applicant or his representative a chance to speak. If someone's here that would like to, please step forward, we welcome you.
Good evening. My name is Paul LaPlante. My address is 1935 Northwood and Road in Nopomo, 93444. I started this application four years ago. I was told 90 to 120 days. And I said, "Well, please give me everything that you require, and I'll expedite it the best we can." And so we were given a few things and followed through with everything, and I have everything dated and logged. So what happened was, it just kept going every three months. There was something new, something came up. It just didn't seem like the staff that was present in those years knew what was required with coastal or whatever. There was a lot of confusion, and I've suffered because of it. I've asked John to speak for me, because I'm a veteran, I'm hearing impaired, so I have a hard time understanding verbally what people might say. So I just wanted you folks to know that this has been a long, arduous ordeal for both of us, and we've done everything we can to follow the regulations and submit everything as requested in a timely fashion, and we just have not gotten movement, because there was always something else that came up. These are the second plans that I've done. So anyway, that's, I just wanted you to all understand that. Thank you.
I'm grateful to be here this evening. My name is John Kilpolainen, and my address is 110 Day Street, also in Nopomo, 93444. I am the agent for Mr. LaPlante and his contractor. I would like to begin this evening by saying that Cindy Jason and Scott Graham have been very helpful. They have given us the attention that we hoped we would have had all along. We started with Sierra Davis and Kathleen Wald. Then we spent time with Mary Reitz, I believe it is, and as mentioned, the process began, the permit application was accepted on November 2 of 2011, and it's been a very frustrating process, and I wanted to make sure that planning commissioners are aware of how frustrating it's been. I don't think it needed to be that frustrating. I hope that there are not others moving forward that experience that level of frustration and indecision and inaccurate information and instructions given to the applicant and so forth. I do want to mention that Mr. LaPlante's intent from day one has always been to comply with the guidelines that are in effect. He has never had intentions of expanding above and beyond what the Planning Commission has had in mind for a project that can be built on that property. The radius question regarding the 50-foot buffer, the, in my opinion, is a misunderstanding regarding whether it's a horizontal or parallel or whether it's a radius. Both of them make sense to me, but I'm not, we were never told specifically that it's a radius, and we had conversations with the current planning staff where we specifically discussed, is this a parallel or horizontal, or is it a radius? And it was our understanding that the parallel or horizontal was acceptable. So if it's not acceptable, it was not something done in an effort to try to move in a direction that we shouldn't have been moving. This question has caused us to ask, how would we know that it's a radius? Is there specifically language somewhere, an ordinance, a regulation that says that it's to be a radius? It just says a 50-foot buffer. Ultimately, it is what it is, but we would like to know where it says that it's a 50-foot radius and that the interpretation that we submitted is, is shown to be inaccurate. That would be helpful to us. The other question that I have is, in, in the four years that this has been going through the process, has Mr. LaPlante been asked to comply with something that came into effect after his application was received? And I don't know that. All I know is that there have been many, many studies that have been piecemealed, you know, starting with an archaeology study, then we went into Morro Bay shoulderband snail study, coastal dune study, snowy plover study, a biologist report, ocean bluff report, the wave run-up. They all seem like logical reports now, but when he was told, you know, 90 to 100 days, follow this checklist and you should have permits, all of these were piecemealed, all of them took months to comply with, and then we're given another one, then we comply with that, then we're given another one. That's how we've gotten to four years here, and at a cost of thousands of dollars and a lot of aggravation. So again, we are where we are. It's his intent. He wants to comply. It's just been very confusing. And I guess the final question is, is there any possibility or any leeway to, for, for the Planning Commission to accept the project as it's been submitted? Thank you very much for letting me address you.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak on this topic? Seeing none, are there any questions for the applicant or the applicant's representative? So then we'll close public comment, bring it back to Planning Commission for discussion. There are a couple of topics. Let me just, let me, let me start with this. I mean, first of all, let me say, let me apologize for all the delays and the length of time that it's taken. I realize that there have been some changes in staff over the period of time that you've been dealing with the city, and that's difficult, and I hope that things are more stable now and that the people that you're working with will be, will be constant. There is, unfortunately, we're dealing with the Coastal Commission here, as you know, a number of the extra requirements that were added on, were not added on by the city, but were added on by the Coastal Commission. And unfortunately, we don't have any control over what they ask for, so, so, you know, the staff originally made one interpretation with regard to environmentally sensitive habitat. The Coastal Commission made a different interpretation. And I'm, I'm sorry, but this is part of what happens when you're developing in the coastal zone. Your, your experience, I know, is frustrating. I know it's been disheartening. Unfortunately, it's not all that atypical. Hopefully, you're, you're back at the city level now, and hopefully, you're getting towards the end of the road on this. I think there's light at the end of the tunnel, and I, there are a couple of items that I would like to sort of discuss this evening before we continue, just to, to give you some clarity moving forward. we continue, just to give you some clarity moving forward. One of the items that I would like to bring up is the whole issue of coastal bluff because that, only because it may come up in the future. It may be raised by the public. It may be raised by the coastal commission. And I'd like it to be clear that we considered that. The report on this that was submitted, the geology report, indicates that there is no coastal bluff in this area. It was largely, referred largely, however, to the coastal commission's definition of coastal bluff, which is that there's marine erosion at the base. The Morro Bay land juice plant has a slightly different definition. It speaks about a 10-foot rise in elevation constituting a coastal bluff. So I would like the commission to sort of kick that around a little bit and give the applicant some assurance as to what the interpretation of that is going to be. I was, if you look at the, I was out there, spent quite a bit of time out there today, had a nice conversation with the neighbor. And from what I could see, from my sort of visual observation, it did not appear to me that there was a 10-foot change in elevation at any, at any point. There's sand dunes, you know, to the ocean side. And so obviously, if you go down in a gully, you could perhaps look up 10 feet. But if you, if you look at the overall elevation of the dune area versus the top of the flat area where the home's going to be built, I did not see a 10-foot difference there. The site plans indicate about an eight-foot difference. And so I just kind of wanted to get concurrence that we were not at some point going to come back and start talking about bluff setbacks.
I agree with you. I went out there and I actually did speak with Cindy yesterday, maybe? Yeah. And I believe that this is like a dune area. And one of the things that we discussed is coastal bluff and the setback with respect to ESHA as well. I also, I feel for you, sir. I mean it. Because this kind of piecemeal and non-integrating way of permitting is not what should be reflected. And I believe that our current staff is addressing those issues in a proactive way. I also was made aware that you had previously had plans and then adjusted these plans accordingly to the bluff setback lines. And that, that is, that was appreciated. That's kind of moving in the right direction. Maybe, maybe I got to, I would like to ask staff something. What do you, what do you see as a remedy? Is it a variant, maybe? A redesign to set back? And how can we collaborate? Is there any kind of collaboration with coastal commission on this? Because one of my concerns, what I brought up, were the sea level rise and climate change and the intensity of storms. These are, these are real issues that are emerging. They weren't so much four years ago, but they are now.
Well, and most of the reports that we have were more updated than that and have resulted, as Chair Teft indicated, from conversations that we've had acting as a go-between between the applicant and the coastal commission. When this area, and I've apologized a couple of different times to the applicant for the process that he's, you know, had to suffer through, four years is enormously a long time. It's unfortunate. If you look at the rest of this tract, none of the houses are setback 50 feet because no one ever identified the area on the other side of it as dune habitat. This is, there's one other, one other vacant lot over there. And it ended up being identified in association with this project. We talked to coastal, coastal said, yep, it's dune habitat, even though it's not mapped or identified in your LCP and you have to set it back accordingly. So that was new information to the applicant. They had to redesign it, push it back. They also, you know, indicated a desire to take a look at, is there a coastal bluff out there? That's part of the reason we have the GeoSolutions report. We looked at wave run-up impacts, sea level rise impacts. These are all things that came out of our conversations with the coastal commission. We could have not done some of those things and let the thing, the project move through, but it would have been appealed. So I had, we had a lengthy conversation with coastal staff about, this is sort of the last one out of the box. You know, our LCP doesn't identify this area, you know, as something that you have to set back from. And they said, tough, you've been making a mistake up to this point. We don't continue to make mistakes. That's not a surprising position from their part. That's kind of how they do things. So they have, we have to comply with it now as far as what do we do now? Because they incorrectly mapped the buffer. Buffers by nature are that sort of radius definition, by the way. That was a question that was asked. When we send out a 500-foot buffer, it's from the edge of the property, 500 foot out from the edge, from any point, in other words. That's how you do it. You don't do it in straight line measurements that like were done by the plan. Obviously, there was some confusion there and it's going to result in a revision to the plan. So how does that get addressed? Well, the applicant's going to redesign the plan, bring it back in, then we're going to schedule it for hearing and bring it back to the planning commission. I would make one other comment related to the bluff issue that was raised. And that's, yes, the definition is somewhat different in our LCP, but the, but the way it's reviewed by the coastal commission is, the level of review is based on the Coastal Act. Their interpretation of the Coastal Act and bluff as it comes out of the Coastal Act is as it was reviewed by Earth Systems. Ours is a little, is a little bit old, outdated. It'll be revised as part of the general plan and LCP update to be more reflective of current policies. But the coastal commission will hold them to the standard that they utilize in establishing bluffs. I've been out on properties on a couple of different occasions, both with Rick Gorman and Mark Johnson, looking at specific projects when I was in Pismo and determining whether things were bluffs or not. They've had lengthy conversations standing over these similar type things, looking at them, saying, yes, that's a bluff. No, it's not a bluff. So I know Earth Systems is familiar with the interpretation that's utilized by, by the coastal commission in making those determinations.
Well, yeah, my position, Scott, is it's not a bluff under either document, either our LUP or the Coastal Act. And then the second issue that I would suggest that we settle for the applicant is the question of the design guideline. On page seven of the staff report, there's a little, there's a discussion about the front door being visible or not being visible and the gate that's in front of the front door. And I, I think it would be useful if we gave some guidance with regard to that. And again, I'll just, I'll start out. The, you know, the, they're guidelines. You know, they're guidelines for a reason, which is that we then have the flexibility to apply those guidelines reasonably. And I, my personal bias, and this is personal bias, is I don't, I don't care for designs which appear to be walled off from the community and which, which have the front door sort of behind gates and fences and stuff. However, I drove down the length of this street and that's what there is there. I mean, I bet you in three blocks, there weren't two, there weren't more than two houses that you could see the front door. So again, given the fact that these are guidelines, given the nature of the neighborhood, you know, I, to me, that configuration is acceptable. And I would be perfectly happy to see the applicant move forward with that. Are there other thoughts to the contrary or?
Well, if I'm not mistaken, Scott, isn't our fence ordinance that in the front yard it's four feet?
Well, in this instance, the gate is proposed out of the front yard setback.
Yeah.
So it's, it could be as tall as the house. It's not, thankfully. But it's out of the front setback, so there's no limitation to the height. It could be 14 feet, 17 feet tall, depending on.
So we don't have any, that wasn't established as a security thing for the police to establish?
No.
Oh, okay.
I had the same question. It's not the front yard, it's the front setback.
Yeah.
I have no problem with the semi, semi-enclosed porch. Actually, I thought it looked kind of nice in the plans.
I don't have a problem with this entry, the way it sits. The other design, from the design guidelines though, too, we were talking about having consistent articulation around the building. And what I see here is on the, on the south side and the west side, the windows are articulated differently. I'd just like to see more, more consistent articulation through, around the whole building and especially on the west side. I think that's going to be, going to be seen. As far as the entry, I think part of that, you know, it's consistent with the neighborhood. I wouldn't want to see it on other houses, but like Commissioner Teft says, it is consistent with that neighborhood. And there is a clear indication that this is the entry. And so it does, it does create human scale. But I would have, you know, I do have concerns about, you know, about defensible space and, and just being able to see your front door as you walk up. You know, it's more, more for the residents. I think it'd be more for the resident's safety than, than actually the community. But I don't have a problem with this design if that's, if that's what they're looking for.
So is there any other, is there any other comments that the commission would like to provide the applicant to make it smoother when this project comes back?
I would like to just apologize for the four years, but also let you know that you do have a beautiful lot. And hopefully, going forward, it'll be a little bit smoother to get to a beautiful home on that lot. And hopefully, it'll be worth it all in the end for you. And I do apologize for the timeframe.
I'm just a little upset I didn't pick it up before Dr. Teft did. But I appreciate the frustration, but there's also, that's a common understanding. This is not, this is not an unusual thing interpretation about the 50 feet. It's 50 feet anywhere. And, you know, that's, I'm actually a little surprised that if you have engineering consultants, they weren't able to understand that. I mean, that's my own personal view. The good news is, at one time, somebody thought this was next to the waterfront property. And now it's the waterfront property. Driftwood's never going to be built on. And we've had projects in here before trying to understand what the nature of driftwood is in terms of setbacks and things. But I think the coastal dune is a pretty prized thing. And I'll agree that I don't believe it's a coastal bluff, but the dunescape's a, it's actually kind of a public asset. And so, you know, the setbacks from there, I think, are real and bona fide. And there's still a fairly large lot here. This is, this is a massive house. And I think the articulation is, is very reasonable. But I think the setback's real. I don't see any, any changing the interpretation of the setback criteria. We have ESHAs all over town and we've been consistent with holding those criteria every time I've seen one come up here. So I think the house, you know, is going to have to do some, make some changes, but it's going to be an amazing lot. And what you see around you is largely going to be unchanged. So whatever you build is really a testimony to your perseverance. It's going to be a beautiful place to live. I think almost everybody in town would, would love to have that parcel to try to do something on. And you've got one of the great building sites in town. So I'm sorry that the staff may have interpreted it, but sort of like if you get tax information, the federal government's always going to tell you what the law is. And coastal commission tells us those interpretations as well. So I think it's, I don't have any real other comments in terms of the project. There are ways to certainly cut costs if you're looking to cut some costs, but there's a lot of roof in the project, the way it's designed. And I think you could make it seem a lot less massive in the roof scape. But see what, see what happens with your, with your team.
Yeah, with regard, with regard to the buffer, I think that, you know, the, what the, what the regulations do indicate is that there can be nothing built within 50 feet of the, of the ESHA. And that doesn't happen if, if you do a translational setback or linear setback. Also, depending on what the configuration of the ESHA is that you're trying to buffer, going with a linear interpretation results in some really ridiculous conclusions. So, you know, honestly, I think your, I think your architect should have understood what was necessary here. And it's unfortunate that he didn't. But I think, I think this is, I think the interpretation that is currently in force is the only reasonable explanation. And I, it's a shame that it happened at this point, but I, on the other hand, if, if we were to, if we were to somehow let this go through with these kind of, with this buffer, it would, it would really be more frustrating for you because you'd be, you'd end up having the coastal commission change it a year from now or 10 months from now. So, so the most direct route to getting this house built is to take care of it now and, and do it right and not get challenged at the state level. So with that, do we have a motion to, do we have a, would you like a date for continuance or would you, would you like a date uncertain?
I think staff's recommendation would be date uncertain unless the applicant has a timeline where they feel like they could have plans resubmitted.
And I'll open, I'll reopen the comment, public comment period to ask just that question. Do you have a, do you have a date that you would like to have in mind? Do you have a date that you feel that you could have this ready to come back by? Or would you rather work that out with staff when you got a little more information?
We would appreciate it if we could work with staff. We don't know if this is 30 days, 60 days. We'll be back as soon as we can.
Okay, that's, that's probably the most reasonable approach. So I'll, again, close public comment, bring it back to the commission. And do we have a motion to continue this to a date uncertain?
I'll move, we move CPO-365 to a date uncertain. Continue.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, could we have a roll call?
Chairperson Sorensen. Or sorry, Commissioner Sorensen, sorry. I caught it that night. Commissioner Luer.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Sadowski.
Aye.
Chairperson Teft.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay. We really are doing the best we can. Okay, unfinished business, we have none. So moving on to item D, new business. Let me ask first if anyone would like a break at this point before we move on to D. No, we're good. Okay, so moving on to item D1. This is a discussion and interpretation of significant public benefit as a requirement within the planned development overlay zone. as a requirement within the plan development overlay zone. And I think Cindy's gonna speak to us on this.
Thank you, Chairperson Teft. So this is a request for zoning interpretation, discussion of significant public benefit. At the October sixth meeting, Planning Commission requested that staff bring back an agenda item for a discussion of the city's plan development overlay zone significant, that discusses significant public benefit. And, and where this is discussed is in the zoning ordinance at seventeen point forty, point oh thirty. I've prepared a few slides just to get us orientated into the topic and then I'll conclude and let the Planning Commission have discussion. But just to start us out from the ground here, so the purpose of the plan development overlay zone provides for detailed and substantial analysis of development on parcels, which because of location, size, or public ownership warrants special review. This, and this is the important point, is that this overlay zone is also intended to allow for the modification of or exemption from the development standards of the primary zone, which would otherwise apply if such action would result in better design or other public benefit. The zoning ordinance under the plan development overlay chapter goes further and discusses how standards may be modified. So standards may be modified in regards to building heights, yard requirements, minimum lot area. And for those areas of the city which are covered by the waterfront master plan, all new development projects shall be consistent with the design guidelines contained in chapter five of the waterfront master plan, which notably talks about significant public benefits. So it requires that if modification of standards is to be approved by either the Planning Commission or the city council, a mandatory finding of significant public benefit shall be made. The zoning ordinance attempts to qualify what that means, significant public benefit, and it lists four categories. And this is taken from the zoning ordinance. It says that such benefits may include but are not limited to improved or innovative site and architectural design, greater public or private usable open space, and provision of housing for elderly or low and moderate income, provision of extraordinary public access, and the last one, provision for protecting environmentally sensitive habitat. And I put into bold provision of extraordinary public access because in the staff report, the research that staff did found that many of the past projects that have been approved by the city relied on that as their way to get the finding of significant public benefit. And so looking up some sample projects and there's no relevance why these projects were chosen over another, these were just projects that I had recalled that had recent approvals. But each of these four projects that were approved, and anything on the west side of the Embarcadero is in the PD overlay, they all had approvals where this finding was made. And as you'll see in the staff report, many of them had similar types of public benefit that was offered, such as, and I've just aggregated them all at the bottom of the slide. There was either a provision of a public view deck that was offered, public restrooms, four and twelve pitch roofs. One of the projects incorporated a public plaza within the view corridor. Notably at eleven eighty-five to twelve fifteen Embarcadero, they offered floating dock access. You will recall, we discussed that a couple of months ago where in two thousand eight, when that was approved, that was, that was a new and, a new thing for its day. So in staff's review, in the staff report and the analysis, is that, as you can tell from reviewing the past projects, is many of those projects offered up project amenities that would have been required regardless of whether or not it was in a plan development overlay, such as ADA access, it's a state law. But the city zoning ordinance says that the requirement for deviation of standards shall be significant public benefit. And of course, several of those past projects had projects where they exceeded the seventeen foot height requirement. When you go up or to, excuse me, when you go to that top tier between seventeen and twenty-five feet, there are those requirements for significant benefit. And so given the examples presented in the staff report and on the slides, we'd just like to leave it at that and open this up for Planning Commission review and discussion of what is the Planning Commission's interpretation of significant as far as the requirements of the plan development overlay zone. With that, I'll leave it for your discussion. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there any questions for staff?
One of the things that's come before is, is the four and twelve pitch. And from my, my memory, it seems like the four and twelve pitch was allowed for up to twenty, you know, twenty-five feet. If that's from seventeen to twenty-five, if you use a four and twelve pitch. One of the things that wasn't stated clearly is direction original lines. And, you know, that's been, you know, that's always caught my, my attention because you could have a four and twelve pitch and run the ridge the opposite direction and you'd lose all benefit from it. So is, was there any mention or have you seen anything in the guidelines relating to that?
I haven't seen anything in the guidelines, but anecdotally, everything that I've seen on any projects is that, that four, that ridgeline runs perpendicular to the bay because the idea is that you would see, you know, both sides, but that's not codified or written anywhere.
Okay, and we've also seen where that area of the cube was used as open space. What is the, what are, what is the staff's interpretation of using that as part of the percentage of the open space of the project?
We, we passed a resolution on that some months ago.
Right, we did, we did have that as a discussion item. And the waterfront master plan is pretty clear. It says open linear spaces. It was direction of the city several years ago where they allowed those box areas. And it's not clear to staff today how that interpretation could be because it, it seems so plain spoken in the waterfront master plan, but.
I, I call it a very tortured interpretation of the, of the codes. It's, it's hard, it's hard for me to get there. It's hard for me to see how that was something that was put forward.
Well, if, if there's no, I, I'm the one who requested that this item be agendized. So if there's no objection, I'd like to lead off the discussion. The first issue, the first, because, and you know, I, I know this is going to come before the commission and I, I just think it's, it's calmer and fairer to the public if we have this discussion without a project on the table. One thing, the, 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 the whole, the whole process, whether it's the waterfront master plan or elsewhere in town, is based on the plan development overlay. Okay? And I think the language is important here because what the plan development overlay requires is not a significant public benefit. It requires a greater than normal public benefit. So the question is to me, the, you know, and yet what we've, what we've seen, what Cindy has illustrated to us is that there are projects that come in which represent a normal public benefit as being greater than normal. So it seems to me that one of the things we should define is what's a normal public benefit? Okay, as opposed to a greater than normal. And to me, to me, there, there are two obvious categories that are normal public benefit. One I call intrinsic public benefit, which is simply the fact that when you have new construction replacing old construction, there are certain benefits that inevitably happen. You get, you know, things are up to fire codes, things are up to building codes, things have new paint on them. They look better, okay? So, you know, the, the fact that we're, we're bringing in something that's new and sparkly and replacing something that's old and dilapidated, to me, is just a normal public benefit. It's just, you know, and the second category would be statutory, okay? If, you know, if, if the, if the waterfront master plan says you have to have a thirty percent view corridor and you come in and say, "Look, I have a thirty percent view corridor," all you're doing is following the law. That's nothing, nothing greater than normal. So, you know, I, I really think that we should add language and I've provided some sort of suggested language and, and staff can work with it, that defines greater than normal benefit as being, as being a benefit which is in excess of that you get from, simply from new construction or from following the law when you, when you, when you develop it. The other thing, the other piece of language which I think is important in the PD overlay in seventeen forty thirty is, is the statement that the greater than normal public benefit must be achieved by modifying the standards. And what that says is there has to be a relationship between the two. You can't have somebody come in and say, "I'll give fifty thousand dollars to the Maritime Museum if you let me build twenty-five feet high." There's no connection between those. You can give twenty-five thousand or fifty thousand dollars to the Maritime Museum regardless of the height of your building. And I think the same thing is true of, of other circumstances. In other words, the modification in design needs to be a necessary feature of providing the public benefit. In other words, it's not just, "I want to modify the design because I want to modify it and I'm willing to give you X in order to sort of bribe you into letting me do it." There needs to be, there needs to be a nexus between the two. And I've suggested some language, again, only suggested. Staff can certainly probably do a better job than I did to, 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 to put that into effect. The, then in terms of the, so in the waterfront master plan, okay? The waterfront master plan does talk about significant public benefit. But at the very beginning of that section, it refers back to the requirements of the PD overlay. It's the granting of extra height in the waterfront master plan area is pursuant to the PD overlay district. And that's the wording of, of the, of the master plan. So, so in terms of modifications in the waterfront master plan area, you still have to have greater than normal public benefit, you still have to have nexus, and the public benefit has to be significant, okay? It has to be worth something to the public. And I think in some cases, we haven't examined that closely enough. In other words, yeah, it's a great view deck, but you can't find the stairway. Is anybody really gonna use it? Those kinds of issues, how, how significant is it? So, you know, I, I think number one, we should clarify what the requirements are for an increase in, in building height. And as I read it, as I read the waterfront master plan, the applicant needs to tell us what are the significant greater than normal public benefits to be provided? And also needs to, to show that those benefits are greater than normal and significant and beyond what is required simply by the waterfront master plan. There, there needs to be a finding that to get those public, that the, that the, that the, the increase in building height is necessary in order to get those public benefits. They can't just be public benefits that are thrown in, you know, randomly. And, you know, one of the things that we sometimes hear is, well, it's, it's not financially feasible to provide the public benefits if we don't get the extra height. That's, that's fine, that may be a valid reason, but I think the applicants need to show us that, okay? I think they need to say, "This is what it costs to," you know, "This is our expected." I think simply to come in with a general statement, "Well, it's not financially feasible unless we..." I, I don't think that's a sufficient demonstration. I think they need to, they need to show that as required by the waterfront master plan, the proposed project will not diminish public views and that it complies with additional requirements having to do with roof, roof slope and other design features that are set forth in the waterfront master plan. So I, I think there's, you know, those are the things that they, that applicants need to be prepared to, to tell us. And then finally, I, I thought a little bit about the, the issue you brought up of extraordinary public benefit. One of the things that seems to me is that you can't have a project that comes in and claims to provide extraordinary public benefit or extraordinary public access if they don't even provide the basic public access, okay? So I, I, you know, I don't think you can come in and say, "Well, we don't have any lateral access here and we don't have enough view corridors, but we're providing a second story deck and so it's extraordinary." I think, I think it should be clear that you have to provide the basic public access before you can provide something more than that and claim to have extraordinary access. So that's, that's kind of my take on it and I'm gonna open it up for free for all at this point.
Before we go another step, I, I would say, you know, what I've noticed in looking through some of the approvals that have happened is we've allowed structures to go into that top tier height structure without really making findings. I mean, they added a public bathroom or something to it. Well, extending that structure up into the, you know, into the higher tier is reducing the views through the site from across the street and things like that. And so you have things that are not offsetting one another in an even manner. If you're losing some view by making it taller or by diminishing the thirty percent view corridor you're supposed to have to eighteen, twenty percent, whatever it is, then we should be increasing the, the view corridor somewhere else, the view, the viewing possibilities. Maybe the public access path that runs along the backside goes from what we normally require now is ten, is now fifteen feet wide, is extra wide along the back. I mean, you need to, we need to have something that's sort of connected. The, the idea and what I've seen is that, "Oh, we'll put some public seating out here and one of our uses is gonna be a restaurant." So, I'm not sure, I mean, I'm just giving you examples of some of the things that I've seen that were utilized to justify some of these reductions, really in public view corridors. And they're, they're not connected. I mean, I, you, you can't get there from here, so anyway.
Yeah, and, and that's the idea of nexus, Scott. And, you know, I, what I'm proposing is that we, we tell people, you, they have to be connected and you have to show us how they're connected.
Do we need to open this up for public comment?
It's not a public hearing item, but, but we can't. There's nothing that says we can't. And we have a member of the public here. If you would like to give us comments on this item, we would be happy to open it up for public comment.
Good evening, Bill Martini. Yeah, I was, I was just more listening, but a couple of public comments is, originally the Embarcadero was supposed to be a one story on the west side with character. The, you know, it was never supposed to be two stories. So I think unfortunately, the whole place has been pretty well blitzed on, you know, the view on the west side of the Embarcadero. I mean, it's virtually done. But as far as the master plan, when I first came in, I wasn't sure if this was a PD overlay for the entire city or if you're discussing just strictly the Embarcadero or the waterfront master plan because I kind of was caught between the two. Because when you're talking about the waterfront master plan, that doesn't apply to the general P, you know, I mean, third of the city has a PD overlay. So I was a little confused on that if this is strictly, excuse me, directed to the waterfront master plan PD overlay. Or is this general throughout the city that you're gonna be requiring, you know, greater than public benefit? So that was just kind of a question that popped up. It seemed like there were two different subjects kind of blending into one here. And then I know I did hear in the past where I just wanted to make sure with this PD overlay on waterfront master plan that that was strictly the Embarcadero because I get, did get the impression in the past that some of that same requirements was drifting south into kind of the residential area. It's like south of the boat launch, there's homes, it's a mixed use on the waterfront. And so that these requirements are actually limited to the Embarcadero as far as when you're talking about the waterfront master plan and the PD overlay. So just as far as the confusion, if this is strictly, you're discussing the Embarcadero on that. But the main point was even in Measure D, which is, in my eyes, has been just totally abused because originally there were supposed to be no new restaurants, no new bars and, you know, different things. And you have two story restaurants in Measure D. And again, the whole Embarcadero, if you wanted to keep with the original fishing theme, was a single story with character, so I just thought I'd. So I just thought I'd kind of reemphasize the original intent of the Embarcadero. Thank you.
Well, I could, I, I can respond to the question part of that. What we're discussing is the entire, the PD overlay, wherever it exists in the city. The waterfront master plan is an example and an important example of the PD overlay. But, but the discussion we're having tonight has to do with the entire PD overlay zone, wherever it may be.
I think, I think in the, in the general sense, when you look at any PD overlay, I think because the waterfront shows so many specific instances that we're familiar with, it could be that when we get into the general plan, these PD overlays have different views on these, on this issue. You know, the master, the waterfront master plan is, is really, to me, one of the, it's really specific because these, these parcels, the way they were originally set up, I guess by the county, when, when they came in, were all small. The thing that scares me is the aggregation of small into larger because all these things sort of warp in a different way when you see the small land entity get combined to create larger buildings. Then, then what Commissioner Luer was saying, now it's not by nature of the width of the site that that roof goes front to back. Now you're starting to get the benefit architecturally from cost benefits of it going north to south. And so it's kind of counter, but it's not based on the idea of roof so much as roof relative to the size of the lot and the articulation. So to me, there comes a point where these issues of what good scale is relative to absolute numbers is, is really hard to gauge because I, I think some of the smaller intimate spaces are actually successful. I don't think bigger is always better. It's the quality of the space. You know, and there's all sorts of, of little things to, to revisit at some point. I mean, one of the things that always struck me is the, the requirement for the, the parking, you know, where you have the first floor, all garages that you're walking past for public access. It's like, well, the in-lu thing would be much better and to have these as populated areas than, than garage doors. So the, the one thing that, that Dr. Teff said is I, I do think this idea of a, like we have a parking in Lufy, I, I could see a, a specific PD zone coming up with some kind of city, you know, bona fide, something that you could use apart from. You know, I don't know what it would be, you know, I, I, just thinking off the top of my head, you know, if we had a major seawall construction from the, the leased lots to the rock or if we wanted to continue the, the walkway to the rock or something like that, could you pay into that instead of doing something at your site? Because at some point, the pressure to get revenue out of the site as such, you have to use every available means. And are we better off with that parcel being artificially smaller, which like I say, the lot size to me is an interesting idea to, to maintain? Or do we, do we take some of the benefit that's there and, and move it? So, so Dr. Teff's point is to not do that. But like the parking in Lu, I, I could see a, I don't know, would we have an eel grass in Lufy or, or, or if we were going to come up with, with some public mechanism for resolving the end of the street where our stair is now? You know, is that a water, bona fide waterfront benefit that you could pay into that the city wouldn't have to spend? So I'd be open to, to revisiting that kind of on a case-by-case basis, but you just can't have people paying into an in-lu benefit zone. You have to have something more specific, I think, to, to see the benefit realized for the public so it's not just a hidden benefit. The other thing is we're talking about really tangible things and some of the intangible things have a benefit. You know, we've seen, I don't know how many houses here the last few weeks that, that must be, you know, in the, in the million range, I would imagine, in construction. And we're not seeing gray water, we're not seeing solar. And, you know, when we've got something in the waterfront, I think there's a, there's a hybrid gray water system that we can reuse water inside some of these commercial accommodations. You know, we don't have any place to put the water like you would on a lot, but before we send it into the city sewer system, if we could reuse it twice in some of these places where, where it would be feasible, that to me is another infrastructure in Lufy that somewhere else we're not, we're not buying infrastructure to make some of these things work. So I'm open to other types of, of maybe less tangible benefits to the public that, that have a larger aggregate benefit too. But I, I think the, the waterfront is so wonderful to look at because we have such specificity there. We have such an obvious record of what, what tended to work, what tended not to work that maybe generated some of these ideas. But I think as we move forward, what, what's significant? You know, if we, North Morro Bay, North Main Street, that's a, that's a PD overlay, is it not? Yeah. So what we would work on there might be something totally different than we would do on the waterfront. So I, I think there's kind of PD-specific things, but these definitions of what's significant, I think are, I think you're right on with that. I just don't know what, what the examples would be to give somebody a tangible example every time. And I just keep thinking some of those parcels on North Main that someday I have, I think we all dream will be built on with something. But we want to see people doing the, having a, having a clear way to do it. But that's my, those are my main comments. I'd be open to a, a kind of in-lu kind of thing.
You kind of triggered some thought for me, Commissioner Lucas, and with regards to the tight nexus, having a little bit of flexibility with, with regards to that at a site-specific or PD-specific area. One of the things that, kind of following up what, what you were saying, maybe I would like to see, when we talk about public benefits and significant public benefits in PD overlays, I think that one of the things that we could look at is addressing access for first responders, addressing infrastructure that's, that's in dire need of, of, of repair, you know? And when we see a, a PD overlay, we can maybe kind of look into that and saying, "Okay, maybe we can have a in-lufy or a fee that could address those issues in that particular I think that's, that's kind of mainly what I'm kind of gearing towards, just more, more of the infrastructure and the, and the access, public access, like, like for instance, that one project that we looked at, you know, having an access, public access to the Embarcadero that might be something that we could, or to the, to the waterfront is something that we could look at and having it for, for, not only for public access, but for, also for first responders.
I agree with both of you, but, you know, that there has to be a nexus between what you're requesting and the, of the public benefit. And it kind of hearkens back to, I think that we were looking at a project upon the bluff and there were, it was really going to affect the view corridors. And the in-lufy, if I remember correctly, was de minimis. I mean, it was like nothing. And unless we address what those are, I think that we're going to continue to, I mean, there is never going to be enough to build a stairway down from, you know, like Front Street down into the Embarcadero or to manage anything. I think your ideas though of, you know, if we're going to do a major public works project that at the bottoms of the stairs, you know, Centennial Stairs, there might be something that you could, that would be a great public benefit. But I think that we've given up so much on the view corridors now that I think it's time that we really sit back and I thank you for bringing this up and to the, the commission that we have to, and I hate to say stop, but I mean, it's to the point where a lot of those decisions have already been made and we already have problems. And, you know, that you can't walk the Embarcadero all the way from Tidlands to the rock without going into parking lots and such. I mean, that's not safe. And I think those are part of our obligations in order to have that straight walking, the ability to walk the Embarcadero. Again, I think there has to be a nexus unless it is some greater public works project.
But let me just, let me just kind of bring it back to earth a little bit because, because, no, I, I mean, I, I agree with all three of you. Okay. I, I mean, I, I think there are, I think there are certain public projects which disproportionately would benefit the Embarcadero and probably should be funded and at least in part by, by in-lufys. But that would require legislation, that would require a change in the code. What we're proposing here is not a change in the code. It's simply how do we interpret the code as it exists right now? So if that were to come up, if, if somebody were to say, "Yeah, we need to do, fix the breakwater," whatever, then they would, they would write the, the code and they would perhaps change some of this language, but we can't do that now. The, the council, and, and, you know, then they would make the decision as to whether that should simply be a, a development fee or whether it should in fact be a reward, you know, be something that would be paid in exchange for relaxed development standards. So it's a, it's a, it's a viable program. It's certainly a good program to consider, but it's, it's not what we've got to work with.
And to tie into that, Commissioner Teff too, is a lot of these projects would probably be better handled in development districts and in community districts where, where the benefits that would accrue to them would accrue to the community, but would also accrue more towards the individual areas. And I could see specifically, you know, if we're talking about the Beach Street, Beach Street Plan, PD overlay, having the stairway at the bottom of Surf Street here would be a benefit for the Beach Street area. It would also be a benefit for the waterfront, but it predict, more predictably for this area here. Where, you know, and ideally if we were, if we were going into the never, never land, you know, ideally, one of the things that would, that I would like to see on the, the waterfront master plan is the requirement of parking. You know, the parking requirements are extremely detrimental to, to good quality commercial design. It creates dead space on the Embarcadero where you're having, you're, you're having to drag customers across basically dead areas. So you're not linking your retail, your retail sites from one to the next so that it's, it's continuous and they continue all the way along the Embarcadero. You have, you have buildings that have been developed with significant public benefits that have turned their back to the Embarcadero and basically present blank faces to, to the retail areas. Well, what happens there is you have islanding, so you don't have any traffic draw further down. So I think those are negative benefits. So if there was something that we could, some way we could address in the designs that, that if you want to do this, that's, you know, that's your prerogative, it's private property. But this is a, this is, once again, this is a negative benefit to the community. So I don't know how we address that in this significant benefits. So, but, you know, that's specific for the, you know, for the retail districts. You know, another PD overlay would be the downtown district. I don't think we have a PD overlay on that, do we? For the, for the downtown area?
No, no, we have the S4 though, which acts as a design treatment overlay, sort of.
But that's a, that's a district that is primed and it's, it's crying out for, for more attention. And so the, you know, once again, parking there is an incredible hindrance, hindrance to these, to developing it correctly. So, you know, you don't want to put parking lots in the middle of the block to, you know, once again, that destroys the retail environment. So it destroys, it destroys the streetscape, destroys people's, you know, advantage, the ability to, to enjoy walking up the street and then seeing what's next further up and discovering that. But I don't want to belabor that point, but that's one of the things I think we do need to, to think about this in the PD overlay. Also, the, some of the PD overlays are, there's, there's commercial areas. I think there's one on Quintana that's a PD overlay. And, but we're getting into totally different, different significant, you know, benefits there. So, so once again, I think that this needs to be nebulous. We've all got our, our pet peeves. For one, I'd like to see the lateral access from, from the rock all the way to the state park. And I'd like to see public access so that you could actually walk along the bay, the continuous stripe. There's a lot of commercial property as, as our, as our public would attest to, that's, that's on the bayfront there. But that's, you know, we don't have, right now, I don't think we have the zoning to allow that, but that would be something that I would like to see in the general plan update. But just bringing that up for, for consideration for when we do the general plan update. But, so getting back to, I think you did a magnificent job, Commissioner Teff, bringing this, bringing this forward. But I think we just, we need to be able to keep this nebulous enough that it works in, not only on the Embarcadero, but it works in the North Morro Bay overlay, it works in the Beach Street and some of these other overlay districts.
Yeah. No, absolutely. And, and, you know, the, the general, the general principle, the, there are some specific things that I suggested with regard to the waterfront, but the general principle are, is simply, is simply two. You know, you have to provide greater than normal public access. You cannot pass off normal, I mean, greater than normal public benefit. You can't pass off a normal public benefit as being a reason to get a modification of standards. And number two, there needs to be a connection. There needs to be a nexus between the requested modification and the, the public benefit.
And what we've seen to this point is, I would say, the exact opposite of what Chair Teff just said. In many cases, I mean, they're like, "Hey, look at the new building we put up, isn't it pretty?" Like, well, I hope so. You know, but that's one of the things that'll be cited in the, the public benefit is that we got a new building, but specifically now on the waterfront, they're required to build a new building to get an extension of their lease. I, I mean, so I'm not sure what we're talking about. It is nice, we're going to get a new building and that's great, but I don't know that that's justification for getting any sort of exception and I don't think it's something that should be used for that.
And I don't, and I don't know if building the new building truly is a public benefit. I, I think they're doing it mostly because it's a private benefit. In other words, they're going to be, they're going to get more rent money. Okay. So does, is that getting you in a direction or is that?
Well, I, I think, you know, from our side, I, I think what we will focus on is the public benefit component of this underneath both the PD overlay component of it as well as the waterfront policies. And we'll see if we can't, you know, go massage this a little bit and then bring something back for you to take a look at with more specificity. We just needed to have the conversation to kind of see where everybody was sitting because, I mean, I have my opinions about it and I've kind of told you that. Chair Teff obviously wrote you, you know, this and so has his opinions about it. It was unclear what everybody else sort of thought about it. Even when we raised it at a couple of different public hearings, we didn't get a lot of discussion from the rest of the commission, just sort of folks nodding their head saying, "Yeah, probably is something we should discuss." And we have projects that are going to be coming in that are specifically down on the waterfront again, but we have ones in play right now that this is a problem with. We have ones that are coming in that this is going to be a problem with. And so it's nice to get some of this stuff sort of, you know, pinned down a little bit more. So I think that's what we'll do. Try to bring something back for you at the next meeting.
Let me just ask, are there, are there specific questions that you need the answer to that you'd like to ask the commission at this point?
Well, I, I mean, really that issue is, it seems like everybody thinks there should, I think I'm taking this, everybody thinks there should be a nexus between the impact that you're having or the exception that you're requesting and then the benefit that you're offering up to offset that. Everybody, I see, I saw heads nodding when this was, this con- Everybody, I see, I saw heads nodding when this was, this concept was being discussed. And so, so we're going to focus the policy language on that, is, you know, you really need to be offsetting something, it has to be something that's real and tangible and really making that finding versus some of these other things that I think maybe have been approved and sort of sold as the public benefit when really fairly margin. Public restrooms are a great benefit. I don't know that, I don't know that they justify a reduction in a view corridor of 10 feet.
Right.
I don't think that's the same thing. And so, and I've seen, I mean, that's some of the things that come up, I don't think that's the same. Or, again, the example, we have public tables and our restaurant right here. Well, I think those public tables are going to mostly be used by the restaurant even though we make you put signs up and say that for the public and they get used marginally by the public, but mostly by the folks patroning the restaurant. Again, I don't think that's really a justification for the reduction of a view corridor, the extension into the top tier of height is, those things seem sort of tough, they don't seem the same to me. And so those are the issues that I, that I see in the, in the sort of things that have been used to justify development in the past that I think are problematic. Overall, PD overlay thing is a little bit different, I think, but I think we still need to focus back on what is the exception you're requesting? Do you want a reduced setback for whatever reason to make the development work and be a good development, then what are we getting to offset that? Are we having some public amended associated with it that sort of offsets, you know, what impact might be from a reduced setback or something along those lines?
Yeah, well, and I do think the greater than normal, I mean, when you, when you look at these examples and people come and say, part of the, part of the public benefit is we're providing view corridors, but they're providing less view corridors than the code requires, you know, that shouldn't fly.
I agree with you. And that's some of the things that have been, that have been, you know, pushed forward and it's, it's evident the impact that it has when you walk down, specifically on the Embarcadero. I think I would rather have wider view corridors so I could see out to the ocean, you know, around those buildings versus, you know, maybe what's happened in the past. I think we, I think we have enough direction to bring something back and then, and then, you know, you get another shot at it and you can kick it around a little bit and we'll go from there.
Could I just ask you one thing, and this is maybe off topic a little bit, but within a public view or a PD overlay, is there anything in there that has like certain buildings that have some kind of a, like a landmark building or a historical value to it? Like, for instance, the old Tybolt Building, when I was talking to a lot of people, that is like iconic, that's what it is, iconic. And, you know, I look at it like, there is, people, when they take pictures, I mean, you know, like my wife's on the Facebook thing, they take pictures with the Rock and then these are some iconic areas. And so is that something that, are we even looking at that?
Well, certainly it's not something that's in our policy documents, I think you're all aware of that, you've not heard that come forward.
Right.
Are those realistic, you know, if you were preserving something like that, that the commission as a whole felt was, you know, worthy of preserving and then there was a request to reduce some setback as association with keeping something like that? Yeah, I think, I think that is a benefit, you know, assuming it's one of those things. You know, I mean, I don't know what the example would be, other than, yes, we have some of those things around town and you can see somebody wanting to preserve components of something like that and then requesting an exception because that existing building was built in 1920 and has a setback that's two feet where you're supposed to have five, 10, fill in the blank. And so that's the exception they're requesting and we're going to get the keep portion of that, that sort of unique iconic building, I think that's a public benefit.
Right.
I would, I would argue to you that it is. So I think those are things that certainly fall within the category, so you actually, I think, gave a good example. And are things that, while they don't come up very often, certainly are, are something that would be within the realm where you could make findings to grant that exception in the PD overlay to sort of preserve something like that? I think that's within the realm, that's what it's intended to do, I think that's why we had the PD overlay, is to deal with different things like that.
Thanks.
Are there any other questions or comments? Maybe we should take opportunity to go forward and to, we don't have any unfinished business, so let's go to planning commissioner comments.
I, I just want to, I don't know how we can do this or maybe go to the city council, but I, to me, I think that one of the priorities that we need to be dealing with is the general plan and the LCP update and what it would take to get a proper budget and whatever it takes to get that moving forward because I...
So, so good point. So here, where are we at right now? Right now, the RFP is with the City Attorney's Office, my expectation is to get it back tomorrow and release it. So, so the RFP is, is being reviewed by the City Attorney's Office right now, my expectation is I will get it back tomorrow and we will release it.
Oh, okay.
So, and right now, the way the schedule plays out is we would have the city council approving the, the contract for that in January. We have some meetings that are missed, so it got pushed out, it was going to be in December, but we're missing the second meeting in December, so that's the way it'll play out.
Planning commissioner comments.
It'll be circulated for a month, well, you know, then we'll go through the, the review of the RFPs, the interviews with the consultants that are chosen out of the subcommittee from the GPAC and myself, and, and then, and then we'll pick one and we'll move that forward to the city council for authorization on the contract and that would be, I think it's like the 16th of January is the meeting it goes to.
Scott, is, are we going to be able to do, you know, even prior to the LCP update? Are we going to be able to do preliminary specific plans for different regions that will come through the commission, such as the downtown, such as North Main, such as...
So, part of the answer to that is no. Once we start the annual plan update, we're not going to be amending our plans. But one of the, one of the items and one of the goals and one of the things that I have budget, you know, budgetary funds for is, it was called the downtown specific plan, but because we are going down a road right now where we're going to be updating the general plan, policies that relate to things you want to do in the downtown, that can just be a separate district and that can be rolled into this effort, so we're not paying for it twice. I don't want to pay, I have money in my budget, I don't want to pay for that effort twice. So what we're probably going to be looking at is a downtown, maybe even waterfront together, strategic envisioning plan. We're going to be, we're, right now, we've started the Embarcadero widening and Centennial Stair, that's the Centennial Stair is going to be the connection between Embarcadero and downtown. We're going to engage both of those factions, Embarcadero folks and downtown folks. Hopefully out of that, that leads us into general plan stuff and will lead us into this strategic plan, envisioning plan option. It could end up being a specific plan, it's just, if we do that, we will be paralleling efforts and paying for them at the same time, which, and I don't really know how to pull one back and without it, so this other effort would lend itself into the general plan update versus, you know, running parallel to it and then expending funds for almost the same work.
Yeah, I, excuse me, I was kind of visioning, not, not creating the specific plans, you know, parallel to the, to the, you know, LCP update, but more as, more as having a precursor through the planning commission where we could do a visioning, we could, we could basically set the, the guidelines for what the parameters would be and just to kind of, you know, get focus on what directions and stuff there it could go.
Yeah, it's a city council goal, I mean, and it's one of, it seems like, I can only have so many balls in my head.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I understand.
So once we get the, I think, once we get through some of the planning efforts on the Centennial Stair and the Embarcadero widening, then that thing will kind of take care of itself, once we have the, we have the public workshop and the stakeholder meetings. And then I'll be able to start focusing on the other piece, because I want them to kind of follow each other through the process and to inform the general plan. I mean, I want them to do those types of things. And we have a lot of planning efforts, obviously, that are going on right now that will inform the general plan update, the ways for our general plan, I mean, that's a huge piece and that's going to be a component that has a lot of connection to the general plan update as well, so. And we're doing an economic strategic plan right now, which went out with our RFP, we're going to be interviewing consultants in a week or two, maybe two weeks, something like that. So that's coming too, and that'll inform the economic piece of our general plan update. So we have a lot of these little things that are kind of paralleling it, that they're going to fit, I think, nicely into the general plan update.
The current general plan uses, uses the word specific plan awfully loosely, I mean, a page and a half of text is not a specific plan.
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions for you, Scott. Can you give me an update on the parking study that was done for Morro Bay and if we'll be restriping any of the parking?
Okay, parking management plan, I think we have that scheduled as a city council item, not this next meeting, so that would be the first meeting in November, is going to be going before the council and we'll be looking at, one of the main topics of discussion is going to be the opportunities for striping some of the streets in the downtown, specifically to add some additional parking. We are going to be meeting also with the consultant that's looking at, which is RRM, I believe, looking at the triangle parking lots and the uses for boat haulout facilities or parking lot or what have you, that's coming up here pretty quick, too, I just scheduled that on my calendar. So, yeah, we have a few of those things coming up for discussion.
Okay, and the second thing is our, the bike park, and I know that it's not in your realm, but...
So, so bike park, we, we had our development review meeting today and we were talking all things bike park. One of the pieces you might recall is part of the property is owned by the city, but part of the property is owned by PG&E. And the park, and the portion that's owned by PG&E is the area where you park cars. So we have to have an agreement with PG&E to utilize that area and we've not been able to execute that agreement. So we've sort of ran this up the chain of command at PG&E and the indications are, based on emails this afternoon, is that we're making some progress there and we might have signed agreements within the next day or two. So, and they're, and they're getting themselves ready to, to move on that right now, the bike park folks, so, before the person that's supposed to design it leaves town or the country or something. So it is coming, it's just there's been a lot of delay because of getting the agreement together with PG&E and I guess the person that normally did these retired, left something, and then it went to someone else that didn't normally do it, was added on duties, and then that person went out for a while. So we've had a little bit of a problem chasing that down, or up, I guess I should say, we're chasing it up the chain of command there to, to get some folks saying, hey, this is a good public project, you should help us out with that.
So you can sympathize with the gentleman who was dealing with the coastal commission? Other questions for...
I guess the one, one of the things, really odd sidebar here, the council voted to have a very loose talking agreement with the offshore wind production farm. And so, is, that's outside the harbor commission, I imagine? We don't have an ocean commission for the town. I mean, would, when would, would we ever see anything like that? I mean, it's just the line coming through the harbor and into the switchyard, we don't really see that as planning commission.
Yeah, effectively, you're correct. The piece that we would get to look at would be that piece when they bring the cable on shore and how that happens. That would be our real permitting piece, although I think they're probably going to pay specific attention to, because it is going to be located offshore of us, 15 miles plus out, but hopefully beyond the horizon line. They're going to, in the, in the various state agencies and federal agencies and so forth, to look at this, are going to pay attention to what the city of Morro Bay says and whether they want this out there, and they're going to pay attention to the fishing industry as well, just by the nature of it being off our coast. So that's why we're engaged, because we want to stay engaged, we want to, their concept is interesting to start with. I mean, I don't know what it's ultimately going to look like or be, I mean, they gave us some examples and the folks that came here were trying to do this in Oregon and couldn't get it in Oregon done, so thought they'd come to California because the regulatory climate was better. I'm not sure about that, about that concept, but that's what they're, that's what was put forward to me. So we, if we figure, if we enter into this sort of loose agreement that, you know, we'll keep talking to them, then we'll, we'll never be surprised. We'll always know what they're proposing to do and we can jump out at any time we're unhappy with what's going on. But that's, I think, sort of the idea, and there's, maybe there's, you know, economic development potential as part of this, economic development is a portion of our goals and a good chunk of the objectives, probably 10 of them are focused on economic development. So our idea is also, by entering into this, is to have an eye towards economic development opportunities that are out in the future.
Any other comments or question? Now that we're kind of all up on the news of the day. And Scott, do you have any comments or...
The only thing I was going to tell you was the, about the, what are the status of the, of the RFP for the general plan and I already went over that, so we're good.
Okay, so given that, we will adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting here at the Veterans Memorial Building on November 3rd at 6:00 PM. Thank you very much for watching.